This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our May Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm Michael Frida, North Haven's first selectman, joined, as always, by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Sally Buemi. It's great pleasure to have you here, those here in the audience, and those watching on North Haven TV. I'd like to start by asking everyone to stand for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. Thank you. Item number two, any public comment to this evening's agenda? Okay, we'll move to item number three, approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen meeting of April 4th.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Item number four, before I introduce this young lady, many of you may already know her. Gia has been a remarkable ambassador for the Town of North Haven for many years, going back when I first took office, when she was about six or seven years old. She has, through all her efforts with the Connecticut beauty pageant, I'm broadening that out, I know there's specific parts of it, Gia, but year after year, whether it's been the Memorial Day Parade, whether it's been lighting the Christmas tree on the green, whether it's been what she's been doing in school, she has continually represented North Haven with a tremendous amount of class, dignity, and she is a young lady, in my view, that's going to be going places as she grows older. She's involved with so many things right now. So she came to me with a subject that's kind of near and dear to my heart, and that is moving. Moving meaning staying in motion, a body in motion. And for those of you that don't know this about me, I'm usually working out very early in the morning and late at night. The workouts include a rigorous weightlifting workout with strenuous aerobic activity, significant yoga workouts, push-ups and sit-ups every day, and I've been doing this basically all my life, in addition to playing over 1,200 baseball games in my amateur career and over 350 football games. So when I hear about an initiative that's designed to keep a body in motion, it was one that resonated with me, and Gia's going to bring forward something here, going to have her address North Haven's residents, and then I'm going to present her with a proclamation. So Gia, would you mind stepping up to that microphone? Gia Iwanik, North Haven resident.
Good evening. My name is Gia Francis Iwanik, and I am so excited to be here tonight. I would like to start by saying thank you to Mr. Frida and the Town of North Haven for allowing me this opportunity. I am so grateful. A little bit about myself, I was born and raised in North Haven and currently a sophomore at North Haven High School. I am a competitive dancer at Gloria Jean Studio of Dance and a proud member of the Eastman Dance Company. I have been involved in the Miss Connecticut Scholarship Organization since I was five years old and currently hold the title of Miss Farming Barreys Outstanding Teen. On June 8th, I will be competing for the prestigious job of Miss Connecticut's Outstanding Teen. With being a local title holder within the Miss America Organization, I hold many roles. Raising funds and awareness for the national platform, Children's Miracle Network Hospitals, is a big responsibility. Embodding the four points of the crown, style, scholarship, success, and service is another, and educating and enriching lives through my personal platform, Get Into Action: Happy Mind, Healthy Body. Developing my personal platform came easy because I live it each and every day. As a dancer, I wanted to share my love of dance, and I know firsthand how important it is to take care of our bodies, and I wanted to share that with audiences around our state but didn't want to limit it to just the dance community, so I branched out to three different age groups, the youth, my peers, and the elderly. For the youth, I am an assistant dance teacher and student choreographer at my studio. I love to be able to share my passion for dance and wellness with the dancers. I also developed a school tour devising a program that includes both educational information along with an exercise program that I share with the students. It has been super successful visiting over 12 schools this year, and I'm hoping to reach out to more schools and communities. For my generation, it was a bit more challenging, so I decided to entice teens where they are, on their phones. I developed a social media Get Into Action daily program along with a GIA movement group at my school and a pledge challenge. Sadly, statistics show that, on average, teens spend more than eight hours per day on social media. With that being said, providing posts and challenges on social media targets my generation, and hopefully they will join in on these challenges and get up and get moving. For the elderly, I have partnered with rehabilitation centers and visit patients monthly. We talk about the mind, body, and soul connection, and how we can add exercise into our daily routines. Then we put on some Frank Sinatra and Get Into Action. The residents really seem to love my program, and it makes me feel very special knowing that I have helped them and put a smile on their face. I'm so honored that the Town of North Haven will be joining me in these efforts by proclaiming a Townwide Get Into Action Day. So I ask you to join me in taking my Get Into Action pledge. So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I pledge...
I pledge...
...to do more today...
Do more today.
...than I did yesterday.
Than I did yesterday.
Thank you so much.
Now, Gia, I'd like you to continue to stand there, and I have this proclamation that I'd like to read, okay? And it's Get Into Action Day, May 9th, 2019. And by the way, before I do this, ladies and gentlemen here and watching on TV, I'd like to introduce Gia's parents, Jana and Nick Iwanik, here, longtime North Haven residents. Welcome, Jana, welcome, Nick. So here we go, Gia. I don't know if I can do as well of the job as you just did, but I'm going to try, okay? Get Into Action Day, May 9th, 2019. Eight to 18-year-old adolescents spend an average of 7.5 hours a day using entertainment media, including TV, computers, video games, cell phones, and movies, and only one-third of high school students get the recommended level of physical activity. With an entire generation's physical and emotional health at risk, Get Into Action programs are an aid to help combat this sedentary epidemic. Young people are highly influenced by promoting healthy habits early on, and they will be more likely to carry those on through adulthood. By understanding the benefits of movement and learning different ways to get moving and pledging to get into action, they are increasing their activity and improving their physical health and overall well-being. The Town of North Haven recognizes, Gia, the importance of physical and emotional health, and we thank Gia Iwanik for her commitment to educating and enriching the lives of those who come in contact with, that she comes in contact with, through school tours and her Get Into Action social media challenge. Now, by promoting different ways to get moving and promoting healthy habits, Gia is getting young and old, both young and old, to understand the significance of the quote "mind-body connection" and the importance of having a healthy body as well as a happy and healthy mind. So today, I, Michael J. Frida, hereby proclaim that May 9th, 2019, is Get Into Action Day, Gia, here in North Haven, and we thank you for your wonderful efforts, and we pledge to continue to promote an active mind, a healthy body, and a perpetual Get Into Action mode here in North Haven.
Thank you so much.
So I'd like to present to you, if you would come up here, I'd like to present to you this proclamation. Okay, Bill and Sally, would you like to stand?
Yes.
Okay. Here we are, and this is for you. Okay, one more. Valerie, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And, Gia, one final note, on behalf of the entire Town of North Haven, including this Board of Selectmen, we thank you for being such an outstanding young ambassador for the Town of North Haven for all the years. We first met each other, you were about six years old, and I saw it right then and there, what a wonderful future you have, you had ahead of you, or you're already nine years into that great future, so thank you for all you do for our great town. Thank you. Okay, now, we're going to move in from Get Into Action to maybe another form of Get Into Action, and that is to please come out and vote at our referendum. I'd like to take you through an overview similar to what I presented at the Town meeting and similar to what we will present at the next Town Budget Meeting. We will wait to see the TVs. Okay, thank you. So tonight, I'm just going to be focusing in on some highlights of this year's budget that we've already presented, and we will present again. This is just the Town side. Our superintendent will be presenting at the next meeting, which is next vow, next Monday, the 13th, correct?
Yes.
At the North Haven High School, we will re-present the Town and the Board of Ed. So this fiscal year starts July 1st, 2019, runs through June 30th, 2020. There'll be no tax increase this year, the mill rate will remain at 31.18. What we're doing in this budget, we're increasing the level of police and fire services. We are enhancing the Town's radio emergency communication system, which is critically important, because what this does, or will do, once it's fully implemented, it will allow our overall communication system to improve and greatly enhance in a more robust fashion the communication system between our police department and our school system in the event, God forbid, of a breach in our schools. We'll be upgrading our information technology. Many of our platforms are still on Windows 7, they're obsolete by the end of the year, we're going to be upgrading that. We'll be upgrading as part of our public safety, our 911 emergency system, with four dispatchers being added in January of 2020, halfway through the fiscal year. This is designed to ensure that we'd have no gaps in the system on a 911 basis, meaning that if someone calls and places a 911 call, that there always, we will ensure that there's people there, and that's the idea of upgrading this. This has been presented on and off to us down through the years, and this fully supports our education budget, fully funds our Town pension system. We had a meeting with the actuaries the other day, and one of the things that I spent a lot of time on here is the Town pensions, working with the outside entities that manage the pensions, looking to rebalance the portfolios. Ed and I worked together on that, and this budget, again, fully funds the pension in terms of the ARC, the annual required contributions. By point of contrast, you may have read, there are other municipalities may be borrowing from the pension fund, they may not be funding it fully. That doesn't happen here in North Haven. We will never borrow from the pension fund to plug in a gap between operations and expenses, or operations and expenses and revenue, I should say. So with that being said, that fully funds the pension. We'll be upgrading equipment in our Public Works Department, and we remain AAA rated, we have very healthy reserves, and our rating agencies are very comfortable with us at all levels. And you know, when it comes to the ascending level of debt, I said this at the Town meeting, we knew years ago that when we're going to build a new middle school, planning the police department, we still were paying off the firehouses, and we still are paying off the North Haven High School, which opened in 2005. We saw in advance an ascending level of debt, and this year's budget will apply some of our significant reserves to the debt service to bring it back down as we continue to move forward and build a bridge to the future. Many municipalities, and I know this because I sit at statewide mayor's meetings, wish they could do this, wish they had those kind of reserves. North Haven finances are very stable and very strong, and I can make 100% commitment that our grand list will continue to grow for the following reason. I'm involved with every single economic development project in the Town, as I've said many times. We will continue to grow our top-line revenue. The annual budget meeting is May 13th at 7:00 PM at the High School. I support this budget 100%. I hope you come out and vote on the 13th. And again, the ref... I'm sorry, the referendum is, Monday, come out on the 13th for the meeting, and the referendum is the following week. Bill?
Yeah, so... 21st.
May 21st.
May 21st, on Tuesday, May 21st.
And there you go.
There we go.
May 21st, all the voting at the Mildred-Wakely Rec Center, right across the street on Linsley. Thank you. Okay, now, we're going to move to item number six. Sally asked to put some items on the agenda.
Yes, thank you. I put a few items on. I appreciate you including them on the agenda, as you always do. First, really quickly, I believe, based on some experiences I've had, Val, you know, I contacted you last week about one of our elected chairs. I think on our website, you know, we have a section there under General Government for contacting us, and there's a list of a lot of different departments with different, either elected officials, the three of us, and other Town employees, and there's email addresses. I really think we should include in that list a Town emails for the chairs of Board of Ed, Board of Finance, Fire, and Police Commission. It would help in some of the calls that I get and directing people to those folks. I think that those are four very important elected boards and commissions, and maybe we should include on our list, putting a public email for those chairs. That's all I wanted to say on that.
Yeah. I thought about what you said, and I think, you know, the, a good example, see, on the other hand, you know, I have some reservations about putting, you know, having things go directly to the chair, and having to respond. I think we all were on the Board of Finance for a number of years. You know, and tonight, we have a letter, you know, where we've been, I think we've been invited to go to a memorial service. You know, it seems like everything should continue to go through, you know, the Town, to either the fire chief, the police chief, even if it's a letter addressed to the chairman of the, you know, Board of Finance, or the, you know, head of the police or fire commission that maybe should come into here, and then it could be, you know, distributed to the other members as opposed to just going to them, because I think it kind of goes outside the normal process.
Well, the three of us each have our own emails on that site, and it just seemed to me, you know, the fire department, the fire commission, for example, they have a standard agenda item every week of correspondence, so I don't know if, I mean, those people are corresponding by letter. You know, when I was on the Board of Finance in the 80s, there was no emails, there were no personal computers, so it just seems that so many people are used to communicating by email and to facilitate, you know, as long as we have this form of government, to facilitate contact between citizens and the top elected board chairs. It just seems like an idea that I'm putting forward. I mean, you could go along with it.
I hate to be all negative, like, on a technology basis, but it does kind of open up, you know, a variety of other...
Well, it wouldn't be their personal emails, it would be like we have, you know, the North Haven email address, but, you know, there's one, we each have our own, the tax collector, who's an elected person, has one, I think the finance director, the police chief, the fire chief. It was just an idea that I had, based on an experience from last week. When I went on the website, I was a little surprised to see that there weren't public emails for those important elected chairs, so it's just something to think about, nothing to really go on, you know, so...
It might be something to discuss.
Duly noted, or maybe you could talk it over with the various chairs...
Yep.
...to see if they would be agreeable to, you know, putting themselves out there for, to facilitate contact from citizens who might see or hear something at a meeting that they might want to comment on. That's all.
Okay.
Next, I put on an update on the Valley Service Road, and second point, I'll start with Valley Service. I put this one on specifically in response to a citizen who contacted me. His name is Steve Smith, he's a former...
I know Steve well.
Yes. He's a former police officer here in North Haven, served for many decades. He'd contacted me before, last year, I brought forth an issue on his behalf about the paving issue, and he contacted me again, specifically on Valley Service Road. You know, lots of people contact me as they contact you, I'm sure many more contact you, Michael. And, you know, most don't want their names mentioned, you know, that doesn't mean they're ghosts, they're real people that contact us, but Steve had no problem with me mentioning his name, and I think I even, on my own accord, asked for an update about a year ago on the Valley Service Road, because I think it was a good three years ago when Attorney Coppola, who's here tonight, and Lynn Sadowski gave a presentation with all sorts of easels and maps about the Valley Service Road extension, and now with, and at that time, it was presented, you know, it's about a 700-foot extension of the end of Valley Service Road, going generally in a northeast, 700 feet, in a northeast direction to hook up with the driveway to Amazon. And we had announced at that time that the purpose of the extension was to help keep truck traffic off of Route 5. So now, here we are, just a few months away from Amazon going into, you know, full-fledged operation, and nothing's been done, and so retired Officer Smith asked me to bring forth, you know, a question about Valley Service Road. I drove down it yesterday, actually, and it's, you know, it's still in the same shape. Do you have any update on the timing of that project?
Um, we have an update, but not on the timing. You see, on this particular project, ladies and gentlemen, this goes back probably 11 years, the majority of the funding is state-funded, and there was a bond resolution years ago where the Town has a contributing amount. So because it's state-funded, it's in the hands of the Army Corps of Engineers and the DOT, so the project hasn't even gone out to bid yet, and the Army Corps of Engineers has yet to issue a permit. So we're not driving this, we're not driving the momentum on this. We are waiting for the federal government, Army Corps of Engineers, and the State of Connecticut, the DOT, to tell us the next steps, so there's really no update.
Okay, what percentage is state-funded, and is there any Town funding for that?
The bond resolution from back in 2008 was, I believe, for $600,000, and the State is contributing 1.6 million, so the total collaborative contributions are 2.2 to 2.3 million, in that range.
So a good 11 years ago, the Town portion, the 600,000 bonding, was approved, I assume, at a Town meeting?
Yeah, the resolution was approved. We haven't bonded for it, but the resolution was approved back...
Okay.
Yes.
Um, do you know if we would need to update that? Because I was looking, I know council is here, I was looking at, I know it hasn't been bonded, but it has, it was authorized, would you say? That's the fair way to say it, at a Town meeting in 2008?
Yeah, 2008.
Because I was reading Section 706 of the Charter, and it talks about expenditure funds for capital improvements, and specifically for construction or other permanent improvements from whatever source derived, and it says that these appropriations will not lapse until it's been appropriated or abandoned, but that abandonment will be presumed if five years goes by without the expenditure taking place. So maybe Town Council could look at Section 706 on page 27 of the Charter and let me know. I mean, I, when I see the phrase "from whatever source derived," I can make a legal argument either way, which is why we have judges, I guess.
I'll look at the Charter provision and also figure out what statute it's based upon, as well.
Right. I just want to make sure that if we do, and I guess this might apply to second point as well, because I believe we're 10% funding on that?
Yeah, it's 80% federal, 10% state, 10% Town.
And our Town, ours is 1.3 million?
1.2 to 1.3.
Yeah, and that was, same thing appropriated years ago?
Years and years ago, yes.
So I just, you know, I guess it would apply to both. I just want to make sure, like I said, because of this tricky language...
That procedurally, we're in good standing.
Whatever source derived kind of threw me a little, and like I said, it could be argued either way. I just want to make sure that if, as we go forward with these projects, that we're not stepping on that procedural...
We don't need further action, yes.
So if you could look at that and...
Of course.
...call me. It's, again, Section 706, at the end. And so, back to second point, that, I thought you said quite a few months ago, that might be starting...
Yeah, we thought so, but the Army Corps of Engineers still hasn't issued the permit, and as a result of that, we can't even open the bids, the bids are still sealed, so...
Okay, because there was talk...
Yeah, the bids are out, but we can't open them, and that's part of the rules and regulations of the federal government, so we can't change that, so...
No, I understand, but, you know, I'm not, you know, trying to stir any pot here, I'm just asking for an update, because about six or eight months ago, you had mentioned the spring of 19, which we're in the heart of, I think, now, and so, so it's, again, we'll blame it on the Army Corps.
Well, I mean, we don't want to blame the Army Corps, they're...
They're a slow-moving group.
They're a very phlegmatic organization, and this is another good example, what I've said time and time here. We say, we give people updates in real-time fashion, this is the fifth time I'm saying this at this meeting, and yet, things change. So when someone says, "Well, you said," and I'm not, this isn't any derogatory...
No, no.
Someone says, "You said something on March 1st, on 2018." Well, yeah, I may have said it, but I said at many meetings that information in government is fluid, it changes, it's linear, so especially when you're dealing with the state and the federal government. So, in fact, I joked at the last meeting that I actually posed the question to the audience one night, "Do you want me to give you information in real-time fashion, or do you want me to not say anything?" And people said, "No, we like hearing the updates as they're happening." But in government, the updates change. So again, when someone says, "Well, you said this on a certain date." Yeah, I said it, but it's changed, because in this case, the Army Corps of Engineers has not issued the permits yet, so...
Right, well, I primarily put the second item in in deference to Officer Smith's specific request.
Yeah, Steve's a good man.
He's a very good man.
And he served our Town well.
For decades.
He's watching, thank you, Steve.
Yes, I remember him on the police department when I was a kid in high school, and, you know, and so when I put it on in response to him, and I was thinking about this financial provision in the five years, I kind of just, kind of hooked second point on, because I think that applies, or could apply, hopefully.
All right, so we'll have Jennifer.
So, you know, there's no negativity about real time or not real time. A citizen asked me to present an update, you know, he was hopeful that the extension, I guess as a former officer concerned about traffic and whatnot, he was hoping that Valley Service Road would be connected in time for the opening of, but of course, there's always delays when you're dealing with different levels of government.
I should say also on this that the State Traffic Commission has already determined that Route 5 is more than capable to handle the traffic alone, so, truck and car traffic from Amazon, so, and it's their road, they weighed in on that, so...
Right, right. I'm hoping that they use exit 13 more than 12.
I agree with that.
Which is why that connection to Defco Park that was done, I think, is important, because if they use 13, they're going to use Defco Park more, I think.
I've talked to Amazon on this, by the way, and they agree that they will encourage, well, that they would, more than encourage, they will direct their trucks to go to exit 13, go north on Route 5, and come in from exit 13 going south into the site, so...
Right, and 13 operates in all four directions. 11 is limited to south only, and 12, you know, that's a little bit too close to home, so...
Yeah, and to their credit, they agree, they agree with me 100%.
Yeah, well, that's good. I always felt, you might have called, I even wrote about this in one of my columns a year ago or so, that I was hopeful that, with that connection on Defco, that they would use 13 the most, so... So I'm sure that Officer Smith is watching, and he'll understand that when you have multiple levels of government involved in a project, there's bound to be delays. The last item that I put in was sort of a continuation of what we discussed a little bit at the Board of Finance meeting, when I brought up the training facility at Northeast. And before I go any further, I want to emphasize that I'm not saying I don't think, I'm not saying we shouldn't have the training facility, I think it's a good idea, and obviously, they believe that it's necessary. I was just wondering, from a financial, from a financing perspective or a funding perspective, how this is working, because I've attended the... Because I've attended the last couple of fire commission meetings, and each, at each meeting during the chief's report, he mentions, you know, some progress in design of the training facility. And to me, that means design means money being incurred. And this is something that's been estimated at $400,000, and it's not in any budget. It's not in last year's budget. It's not proposed in this year's budget. So how are we going forward? You know, last year, we needed to approve $220,000 for the five armed guards in the schools. Why aren't we needing a town meeting to approve the $400,000 for this training facility when it's not in the budget and we're already incurring expenses toward it?
So the simple answer is that it's planned to be funded by the overage of Quinnipiac's pilot payment. So in our budget, we have $300,000 of voluntary payment from Quinnipiac. I fully anticipate having that check hopefully this month. Anything like they have in the past, that they've given us more than what is already budgeted for, we apply it to a community project. Those community projects have been, I've worked very closely with all the PTAs here in town. We built a new playscape at Green Acres School. We built a new playscape at Mono East. We were down at Bridge Road yesterday with a remarkable gathering of children, teachers, and Quinnipiac funded that playscape. So, and those funds are over and above what's in the revenue line item in the town budget for the voluntary payment. So the way that will happen, the building of it, to answer your question, really, right now, it's the overage of what Quinnipiac, if they decide to give us any overage. And if not, then it may get stalled, but that's the plan right now.
Okay. So anything that comes in, because for '18, '19, we budgeted 300.
Right.
And for '19, '20, we also budgeted 300. So you're saying it would be funded from any overage. Now, you might recall way back when they started this, I believe about four years ago, they were, they had that complicated formula based on a certain percentage of the pilot that the state pays. I don't know if they're still following that. Hard to say.
You know, I think, you know, to that question, every time we get a check, we look at what we get, we're getting from the state on the pilot, and then we determine, you know, afterwards what the formula is. But they've been very generous, Quinnipiac University.
Yeah, I know. And they've actually gone above and beyond-
Yes.
-a few times, as you mentioned.
Yes.
So, okay, so it will depend on what we get. And of course, we appreciate their voluntary payment, because after all, it is voluntary.
You know, and I'm also delighted to say that, you know, President Ollie and I have really developed an outstanding relationship. We work very closely together, just like I did with President Leahy. And, you know, different presidents have different philosophies and different cultures, and Judy's been great to work with. So I meet with her on a regular basis.
If only there were some big international company coming into town that might want to kick in. I don't know. Okay. So thank you. That's it for me.
Okay. All right, so we're going to move now. Thank you for the items on the agenda. We'll move now towards item number seven, and I'm going to have, let's have Bill read number seven, okay? And then we'll have, we'll rotate back and forth now.
Sure.
Thank you, Mike. The next item on the agenda is to accept the donation of a certain real property known as 6 Banton Street, North Haven, an undeveloped parcel from the estate of Nancy Love Leonard. There is no expense to the town of North Haven associated with the land donation.
So what we're going to do here, we're going to have our town engineer, Andy, present this. And I'll tee it up by saying that this was presented to me as sort of a gift to the town of North Haven. And I spent a lot of time on this determining whether or not the North Haven Trail Association would want this. And in working with them, they met, they talked to their membership, and it was almost unanimous, I believe, that everybody wanted it as an extension of what that great trail association has been doing down at Banton Street. So I'm going to turn it over to Andy to show Sally and Bill and our audience exactly where it's located. Andy?
Thank you. Can you see that? Okay, so, so as Arvin said, it's a 6.1-acre parcel. This is the parkway here. This is the northbound rest area of the parkway, and this is Banton Street, as it runs along here. 6.1 acres, immediately adjacent to the state park, the state park there. The entire property is wooded. There's no structures on it. The entire property is also within the floodplain and the floodway. So, you know, it's a property that really could not have been developed. But being immediately adjacent to the state park and the existing trail, it seemed to make sense to the town to take that on. Let's see, so I walked with the Public Works Director and the Wetlands Enforcement Officer back in October. We walked around the property. It's a beautiful piece of property. As I said, it's, you know, it's all wooded, lots of wetlands on it. A title search had been done, as well as a Phase 1 environmental assessment, and there was no significant issues that were identified in either of those. So, you know, the Public Works Department strongly supports the adoption of this property. And again, there is no cost to the town for the property transfer. That's pretty much it.
Bill or Sally, any questions?
We accept gifts.
Okay. But once again, Bill, done there? Again, endorsed by the North Haven Trail Association and the Banton Street group that has regular walks there.
Right.
In which they're already walking on the property or using the property?
Not right now, no.
I don't think they really are, no. Because there's really no trails on it. And I think the hope was is that the existing trails that are on the state park property would be extended onto this property as well.
Right. That's their plan, yeah.
There'd be no problem with the state doing that.
No, I wouldn't.
If we extend-
No, I wouldn't expect so. I mean, like I said, it's mostly floodplain and wetlands, but, you know, trail construction is usually something that's allowed in those areas.
All right, so Bill, can you continue the resolution?
Resolved that the town of North Haven accept the donation of a certain real property known as 6 Banton Street, North Haven, an undeveloped parcel from the estate of Nancy Love Leonard.
I'll move the resolution as read.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
No, second.
I meant to say second. Sorry.
So motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Andy. Sally?
Okay, number nine. To consider and vote upon whether to authorize First Electman Michael J. Frieda to execute a grant of easement on behalf of the town of North Haven pertaining to the granting of 415 Washington Avenue Partners LLC to the town of North Haven of an easement on property owned by 415 Washington Avenue Partners LLC at 409-415 Washington Avenue, North Haven, Connecticut for the purpose of the town's maintenance of an existing sewer line or lines owned by the town.
So this one is a little bit more complicated, so I'm going to turn it back over to Andy.
Sure. And with your okay, item nine and item 11 on your agenda are linked, and it's basically the same thing. It's just talks about two different, or different parcels that are going to be transferred from 415 Washington Associates. So essentially, I'm here tonight, we had presented this, I think it was back in February, and kind of talked about how that property transfer was, would happen. There was a little confusion as to some of the things that were said at that meeting, and I just want to make sure it's clear to everybody exactly how those properties are going to be transferred. So essentially, there's three separate parcels as part of this transaction. And the first parcel is essentially a sewer, follows a sewer line that was installed 10, 12 years ago, specific for the Worton Brook Industrial Park. And that was a sewer that was put in to hook in Brescombe Barton, and sewer lines were run down Defco Park Road, up the new driveway access to Amazon, and over to an existing sanitary pump station, which existed on the Amazon property. So the first parcel is essentially this little section in here. That will be granted as an easement, so that the town can get in and maintain that sewer as needed moving forward. The other parcel, which is going to be granted as an easement, is a section of the former Nummi Road, which essentially runs from the existing railroad tracks out to Washington Ave. So our sanitary sewer essentially runs from the pump station and extends along this entire line out to Washington Ave and ties into the Washington Ave interceptor. So obviously, the town needs to have rights to that property to be able to maintain those things. The third parcel, which is actually item number 11 on your agenda, is an actual quit claim deed that 415 Washington is going to provide to us, which will cover a small parcel where the pump station is, and then the section of Nummi Road off to the railroad tracks. That section of Nummi Road is being used for access currently by three residential properties that exist there. They're kind of tucked right into that existing parcel. Currently, they get their access through an access road that had been built by the town. There was an issue with the railroad crossing at one point, so this road was put in, and the section that 415 is going to give to the town, basically incorporates and makes a connection to that. So that's basically the bottom line. So the two sections that are in blue are going to be easements, and the section in red is going to be a quit claim, so they'll give us title to that property.
Questions, Bill, Sally?
We have just two documents in front of us. A quit claim deed with covenants and a grant of easement.
Correct. So the grant of easement is item nine on your agenda, and that's the blue areas that I showed up here.
Right. That's the, it's like 4,400 square feet.
Correct. 4,400 square feet is this section.
Right.
And then you have the section over here as well, which is also cited in the documents.
Okay. On my map, I have the map dated June 13th. This was the one that was included in the packet at the February 7th meeting.
That's right. And that's one of the reasons why I'm here, because this section was never shown.
And it doesn't go all the way to Washington Avenue?
Correct.
But now it is going.
Right, right. And basically, in the written agreement, that parcel, this parcel right here, was cited, but there was no map associated with it.
Right. But the property description has it at 27,853 square feet, which is the same exact number of square feet for proposed parcel A, which does not go to Washington Avenue. But now you say it's being extended, so wouldn't that be more square footage? And I don't see it in the-
There is a separate description within that document that talks about the, this piece over here.
Okay. I don't have that.
The only thing that's changed since your February, because I went through everything to make sure everything was in order. The only thing that's changed since those papers that you received for the February meeting-
Right.
-is the parcel two, which is the strip that runs from the east side of the railroad tracks out to Washington Avenue. That was in the quit claim deed originally.
Okay.
And they just moved that to, we're getting an easement instead of a fee interest. That's the only change.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's identical. And then there's a reference early on, but that's the real substantive change is just, instead of getting a fee interest, the town is getting an easement on that one strip, that 16 and 1/2 foot wide strip.
So this was the old parcel two?
The parcel two. Yep, exactly.
And is there a separate easement? Because the grant of easement has, I thought, just the 4,400, or is that being added to it?
No, no, no.
No, no, what? Show me what you have.
Yeah, you should have these documents. These were with the red line revisions.
Yeah, yeah.
Just show-
They changed some prepositions, some over to beneath.
They moved, they eliminated from the quit claim deed-
Right, I see that.
-the parcel two, and then they just added it to the grant of easement. So you should have it, the grant of easement, the addition of the parcel two in the exhibit.
Okay.
And what you were given last time was the Nummi Road East, the map.
Okay.
That's on file in the town. It's that, it's, that's the description.
Okay.
The only thing is, is I noticed that when I looked at the deed, that it's referred to as the ninth piece in that deed from UTC to-
Okay. I think that ninth piece-
Washington, as opposed to parcel one, so I didn't make that up.
All right. The ninth piece, I think, dates way back to the deed where they took title to the whole, yeah, 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 I saw that. Okay.
And then there's another reference to that little strip in the 11th piece of that UTC deed as well, but that has to do with the rights to pass and repass. I looked at everything.
Okay. I, what do you think about the easement, the non-exclusivity portion of that, of the easement, in that other utilities can come in? That wasn't an issue for you?
No.
Okay.
No, it was, yeah.
And how it could impact, all right.
That's, yeah.
And I'm going to say the same thing that I said in February, if I can, on the quit claim, the covenants, on number three, the town guaranteeing.
On the 250,000.
I talked to Attorney DiNofio about that, because the word guarantee scares me very much. I'm sure it might scare you. And he acknowledged, you know, the merits of my point, and, you know, whether or not there should be some sort of force majeure provision in there for that type of guarantee language. I remember the tax incentive agreement that we did in June of 2017 with these folks and Amazon had force majeure language in there protecting them against certain contractual obligations.
That we revised.
Right. But, you know, what's good enough for them should be good enough for us. But you share Attorney DiNofio's opinion that you're not concerned with the guarantee language.
I am not concerned because I spoke to both Mr. Bodwell and Mr. Bob Velacqua about that exact issue.
Because it runs with the land forever, and it also covers any future uses of the property. I mean, it's, right now, it's a Amazon distribution center, but going forward, it could be something else that could, and, but I guess there, I thought I saw provisions that it could be modified.
Exactly.
But I just don't like the word guarantee. It has penal, financial penalties for us if we somehow, after a reasonable time, don't guarantee the 250,000 gallon, and, you know.
Again, I think we really need to rely upon the professional staff, and they are very comfortable with the provision.
Okay. I don't like it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Andy covered it in its entirety, and it's a series of paragraphs here, so we, I'm going to ask Sally and Bill to continue to move forward with the reading of these.
All right, we did nine, so where does that leave us?
10.
Of course. All right, I'll do 10. Resolved, First Electman Michael J. Frieda-
I don't think we read nine, did we? Or we did?
I think I read nine already.
You did nine, then just do 10. I'm sorry.
Resolved, First Electman Michael J. Frieda is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the town of North Haven the grant of easement wherein 415 Washington Avenue Partners LLC grants to the town of North Haven a 4,427 square foot, more or less, easement area as shown on a map entitled Property Easement to be transferred to the town of North Haven by 415 Washington Avenue Partners LLC dated as of June 13, 2018, and prepared by Langton Connecticut, Inc., Parcel 1, and an easement under and through that portion of property approximately 16 feet wide, known as Nummi Road, located east of the railroad tracks and running east therefrom to Washington Avenue, and being the same property described in the last paragraph of the ninth piece description in the deed recorded in volume 590 at page 701 of the North Haven Land Records. Everybody get that?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so can we have a motion to accept that resolution?
Motion to accept that resolution.
A second.
All right. Motion second. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 11, William.
Okay. To consider and vote upon the acceptance by the town of North Haven of a quit claim deed with covenants from 415 Washington Avenue Partners LLC of certain land consisting with covenants from 415 Washington Avenue Partners LLC of certain land consisting of one parcel as described in Exhibit A to said quit claim deed with covenants for the purpose of maintaining the sewer line owned by the town on the subject property. And then resolved, the Town of North Haven accepts the quit claim deed with covenants from 415 Washington Avenue Partners LLC for the real property described in Exhibit A to said quit claim deed with covenants.
All right. Can we have a motion to accept the resolution?
I'll move the resolution as read, as long as the minutes reflect that Selectman Boemi had concerns about the word guarantee in covenant number three of said quit claim deed, but I will move the resolution as read.
Okay. That's fair enough. Liam?
I'll second that.
All right. Motion, and there's a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sally, would you mind property tax?
Certainly. I will move the property tax refunds listed in our agenda.
Okay.
I'll second, I'll second that motion.
All right. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, the next meeting here of the Board of Selectmen is Thursday, June 6th at 7:00 PM. Now, we're at the point of public comment.
Before public comment, could we remind the folks about the Memorial Day Parade, maybe?
Yeah, we were going to do that before the adjournment, but...
Oh, okay. I thought we were doing it now. All right. We'll do it later.
Okay. All right. No public comment. Yes?
My name is Jennifer Atkins. I'm from 67 Upper State Street, 67 Upper State Street, sorry. Allergies are kicking in early. Thank you for this opportunity to address the Board of Selectmen this evening. It is a great honor and privilege we have in this town and this country to be able to speak our minds. The last time I spoke publicly, I was not prepared with a speech. Rather, it was an impromptu attempt to handle a situation. I will apologize for the length of this. Tonight, I would like to address several issues that have come to my attention and voice my opinion as it is my given right. To give you a little background of myself, I have lived in this town since the age of approximately three. We won't say how old I actually am. And in my twenties, I proudly became a volunteer firefighter. Since then, I have had three chiefs, four or five deputy chiefs, several captains and lieutenants in both the career and volunteer ranks, seen firefighters come and go, and witnessed a diverse department along the way. While there is absolutely no disrespect or lack of acknowledgement to the past administrations for the jobs well done, the present administration is absolutely top-notch. They are experienced, well-educated, knowledgeable, and well-rounded regarding issues of the fire and EMS industry, and how to run a department, moving it forward into the future as the industry and this town evolves. This town should feel very confident in the decisions of our leaders regarding the overall safety and needs of this community. While I have supported this town and voted as I felt appropriate, I never considered myself a political person, nor am I accustomed to addressing town issues in this manner. I stand up for what is right, shoot from the hip, tell it like it is, and friend or foe, I will always be more than happy to support you if I feel you are correct, and tell you when I feel you are wrong. The 2019-20 budget, I will not pretend to understand the intricacies of it. Line items and fund balances are not my cup of tea. That is why we have experts who provide us with their experience, reasoning, and best judgment of how to handle the situation, and it is up to us to translate our understanding into votes. My knowledge is very limited in the technical aspect. I would, however, like to discuss it in terms of down-to-earth, tangible situations, if you will, or the intrinsic value. While it has been noted that the population of this town has not increased drastically since the '70s, I would like to point out some changes that I am aware of. Though not an expert, I would ask you to note the increase in new developments, condo complexes, and neighborhoods since the '70s. Commercial areas such as Universal Drive and the buildup on Washington Avenue, and the types of businesses that have emerged over the years. Senior housing on Pool Road and Clintville Road and Sackett Point Road, in addition to the housing located at the senior center. While the bedroom community may have remained somewhat consistent, there is transient community that works in this town and leaves, the travelers on the local roads and highways, both 91 and Merritt, as well as trains, commercial, and passengers traveling through town and their diverse cargo. Even something the average person does not consider, building construction, and how it has changed over the years. The days of mostly solid wood and brick homes have been replaced with breakaway trusses, cheaper materials, and products made from petroleum, causing for less time to evacuate, quicker to burn, and more dangerous chemicals for firefighters to handle. Even handling a car accident has been met with new challenges based on technology and the building construction and components of automobiles. Calls within the fire service have predominantly shifted from traditional fire to medical. There are always concerns for the safety of first responders, and the hot topic is carcinogens, cancer bills, and the debates regarding the transfer of carcinogens from our gear to our bodies, the same gear that is supposed to protect us while we do our jobs. I am sure I can go on with other examples of changes, but I am sure you get the idea of the issues that our leaders are dealing with. I pulled some information from the Town of North Haven Fire Department website that I would like to share. According to the website, the population of nearly 25,000 residents with a daytime population of approximately 32,000. There are four strategically located fire stations, three volunteer, and one career. Our jurisdiction includes 21 square miles consisting of 133 lane miles of limited access highway, 250 miles of town roads, 9,500 households, and nearly 1,000 businesses, including critical infrastructure. And every year, we respond to approximately 4,500 calls from the residents, businesses, and visitors. Again, that's from the website as it stands right now. Why is this important? The last Fire Commission meeting of April 23rd, according to the chief's report, the alarms were 1,406 year-to-date. It's only May. EMS-related calls were 65% of the calls, and there were nine highway calls. I can assure you, living close to the Merritt Parkway, that number has gone up already. The fire department started out as volunteers when times were different. We have been fortunate enough to have men and women who want to continue to serve this community within the volunteer capacity, and North Haven has been able to maintain a combination department of career and volunteers who train hard and respond to the call for help anytime, day or night, 24/7/365. There are times when we, as a town, rely on mutual aid from other departments. When an incident happens, this is common practice amongst fire departments across the state and nation, as well as calling back off-duty personnel when the need arises to provide additional manpower to a particular incident or to cover the town during an extended incident period. I will not bore you with statistics, but across the nation, as a generalization, there is a decline in volunteers, and there are several reports on the Internet and reasons for the decline in recruitment and retention, citing in general work and family commitment changes, the commitment it takes to be a volunteer, the level of commitment one has to their community, just to broadly name a few. As much as we always want to be there, there are times when some of us are unable to, and believe me, that is not an easy pill to swallow for first responders. I wish I could leave my job for every possible call. I believe by adding additional personnel, we are increasing the manpower available within our own jurisdiction, and if stationed strategically, that may even cut down on response time within our fire districts for the assistance this community deserves and expects. Our fleet of apparatus is approximately 25 years or older in some cases. Let me ask you honestly, how many of you keep a car over 25 years? And further, how many of you would be willing to keep a car over 25 years that has mechanical or performance issues? I ask you to remember, these engines and trucks and ladders are in service to transport multiple personnel at a time and needed equipment at any given moment to call for assistance, to a call for assistance. Do you want to feel confident that when you call, the fire department will show up? How about not having an engine respond because we can't get it in gear to move? Or is it unavailable because it's in being repaired again? Here is a picture. A call comes in, and one engine is in for repair. That fire house is down one engine, is down to one engine to transport six people maximum instead of two engines and 12 people. A ladder truck that we roll the dice as to whether the ladder will raise or lower, and the safety of the firefighter that may be on that ladder at the time, or how it may be needed in a rescue effort, or because it failed inspection. Do you want the level of response, the level of personnel available to handle any given incident? Do you want the firefighters to be safe, not fatigued, and have enough resources to handle an emergency? Our administration does, hence the request for 2019-2020 budget. And I would hope the people of this town understand the need for the equipment, apparatus, and personnel we ask for, as it is in their best interest and safety as the industry and this town evolves. I am perplexed by the mixed messages being received illustrated by the level of investigative and in-depth review of the department's daily operations, policies, procedures, and standards. While I applaud the level of interest, there is an aura of micromanagement, especially when the input of fire personnel from outside departments are engaged. Yet, those same people are not confident enough or willing enough to be quoted by name. There is a great amount of voting history touted and support of the department made behind the voting curtain. Yet, the department is being scrutinized and just plain given a hard time, which I am finding to be a mixed message. I hear the fire department and personnel are liked, but constantly ripped apart. There is a necessity, there is necessity for additional personnel for the long-term outlook of the department, yet there is a debate over how and why they are being hired. While there is scrutiny in hiring more personnel, there is a request for more diversification. I again applaud people for having the passion to do their job and wanting to learn how and why, but at some point, experts need to be trusted to do their jobs as they see best for the community and the departments in which they also took an oath to protect. I happened to watch the Police Commissioners' meeting of 3/26, where they discuss response levels and calls, training taking place, new personnel training updates, the building construction updates, and even union contract discussions beginning soon. Yet, there was nobody there to inquire and scrutinize the police department. Lastly, I would like to personally address some issues. I would like to address a few issues where I felt the conduct of Selectman Boemi was unbecoming a selectman and representative of our town in her actions and style in handling situations. Selectman Boemi, I respect that you are all about having an opinion, and I believe these are my reasonable criticisms. Firstly, it has come to my attention that while unnamed, I was part of the topic of discussion in the May 7, 2019 edition of the Advisor, specifically Third Selectman Boemi's article titled "I Was Just Thinking," and an article on the Democrat Town Committee website under Selectman's column. I recently spoke at the Fire Commission meeting on April 23rd, 2019. While I would never stop anyone from doing their job, I am dismayed, appalled, and quite frankly, a little hurt that Selectman Boemi, who to my knowledge is also an attorney, would choose to take a portion of my speech out of context, adding words and misrepresenting what I said, completely giving it new false meaning when she usually takes great pains to quote people when discussing a situation, essentially causing more static and drama. And again, we are shifting our focus from the real issues that need to be addressed in order to correct what I feel is a misrepresentation. Selectman Boemi is correct that I addressed her specifically at the meeting, simply because we have seen and heard comments regarding the members of the North Haven Fire Department. I must admit, there has been a level of frustration. In the aforementioned article, she said, and I quote, "Speaking of the fire department, at a recent commission meeting, a volunteer firefighter came to the public comment microphone to specifically address me, saying the firefighters are tired of hearing from me, and that I should just let it go." Selectman Boemi went on to discuss her level of commitment and actions to look out for the town and the taxpayers' checkbook. Let me repeat part of that, saying the firefighters are tired of hearing from me, and that I should just let it go. Her quote of me, paraphrased or not, is only partially true. I did, in fact, ask her to let it go, like the song from the movie Frozen. It is now part of the history of North Haven and for all to see at nhtv.com online, and I have nothing to hide. But I was specifically referring to, and immediately following that statement, went into discussing the drama that has been brought up at every opportunity possible regarding her feelings and the members of the fire department's decision to leave a town meeting April 2nd, 2019, when in public comment, people were allowed to get up for a second time to speak. What I did not say was that we were tired of hearing from her, and it was never regarding her doing her job that she took an oath to do. I asked her to please let it go, the all-consuming situation regarding the fire department members' decision to leave the town meeting because it had been beat like a dead horse. It has also been discussed at the following meetings that I know of. April 4, Board of Selectmen, you asked Second Selectman William Piper's opinion. April 23rd, Fire Commission meeting, asked the commissioners their opinion. Not only did you ask their opinion of our actions, in my opinion, you unbecomingly pressed them for their opinions, almost as if you were hoping they would side with you if you kept pressing them. I felt like they were being cross-examined and on trial in the manner in which they were spoken to. From April 2nd, the date of the town meeting, to April 23rd, the Fire Commission meeting, you had plenty of time to ask a firefighter why we took the action we did. Yet, to my knowledge, not one was contacted. Therefore, I addressed the situation in hopes of putting it to bed, once and for all, and asked that we focus on the real issues at hand. I also noticed, at the Adult Spelling Bee held at the North Haven High School on April 25th, which is supposed to be a fun, lighthearted fundraising event, when the team comprised of, I believe, First Selectman Mike Frieda, Probate Judge Michael Brant, and Town Clerk Stacy Yarborough, did not spell a word correctly. While leaving the stage, you unbecomingly were the only one waving them off the stage and the only group you waved off the stage. I would like to remind you that you made the respectable decision to become a leader in this town, threw your hat into this ring, as they say, and people believed in you enough to vote you in several times. I admire your diligence, time, and ability to research, as well as be detailed-oriented as you are in, as you are looking out for the best interests of this town. I would also like to point out that with that responsibility comes opinions, fair or not, positive or not, from the members of this community. And being a political figure, people are not always going to agree with you and have kind things to say, such as life and a tough skin would do you well. On the topic of respect, Selectman Boemi, at the Fire Commission meeting on April 23rd, 2019, you mentioned your father raised you to be respectful, to raise you to be respectful. You asked for and have expressed that you expect it. You have called the acts of others disrespectful, childish, intolerant, and talked about not putting best feet forward. You pride yourself in giving your opinion, yet there are times, in my opinion, when you forget to give respect, put your best foot forward, or are tolerant of others' opinions. I want to make this very clear. I respect the opinion of others and would never stop or ask someone to stop doing their job. My statements were never about that. I see the passion for this community as I share in that passion, and the only way to understand is by asking questions. There is nothing wrong with that in general. I do not wish to be a part of someone's political agenda, and I hope that this can be considered resolved at this time, and we can all focus on more important issues concerning running this town. Maybe the ultimate outcome is just to respectfully agree to disagree. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
If I may respond, since much of that was toward me. First, yeah, I did wave in a generally a lighthearted manner when Mr. Frieda's team left, and I thought that was within the spirit of the lightheartedness of the night. And they were the only team that I waved goodbye to because we were eliminated next, so I didn't have the...
We were eliminated?
We were eliminated right after you, so I never lasted long enough to wave goodbye to anyone else. to anyone else. But I thought that was, you know, they always put you and I next to each other to sort of highlight the competitiveness, so I didn't feel that the waving was disrespectful and it wasn't intended that way. As far as fire apparatus, we have two active apparatus that are over 25 years old. One is 27 years old, and one is 32 years old. And the 27-year-old apparatus is being replaced by the new pumper engine that was authorized at the February 25 town meeting and a $750,000 appropriation, which I fully supported and voted in favor of and advocated for. So that would eliminate one of the two active engines over 25 years or older. The second one, which is 32 years, I'm hopeful we will get the grant. We're still waiting for the chief to report on the status of the FEMA grant, so I'm hopeful that that 32-year-old apparatus will be replaced once we get that grant. And of course, we did purchase, at a cost of 1.2 million, the new ladder last October, and I fully supported the $300,000 purchase of the used ladder truck that is in this budget. And to answer a question that Ms. Atkins had asked of me at the April 23 Fire Commission meeting, yes, I have taken a tour northeast by Kurt Andrews, who's sitting right behind you right now, who did give me a tour of the ladder that's at that site, and I did see firsthand its problems, and fully support the $300,000 appropriation. However, I was asking the Board of Finance to fund it through MERSA, which is a special state fund that we use, we're currently using this year, to fund many public works, high-ticketed items, in an effort to keep it off of the mill rate calculation, to try to help the taxpayers a little bit. But wanting it paid for from that fund does not lessen the commitment for it. So yes, I have seen that truck and personally saw the rust, and Mr. Andrews gave me, I put my hand in it. Thank you, Mr. Andrews, for reminding me of that, and fully supported that apparatus. And during my tenure on the Board of Selectmen, I have supported every fire department apparatus, and I was even supportive of the vests that were discussed this year, which the Board of Finance, I believe, did not approve. So there's never been a question of my dedication to apparatus and/or equipment for the fire department. And I did, you did quote me in my article, but you, if you had gone on in my article, I did say that you, Ms. Atkins, eloquently described, so I was trying to be as very fair, eloquently and emotionally described the level of commitment and dedication of our volunteers and our career firefighters. I mentioned that specifically in my article. And I went on to say, and I'll say it now for those who have not read my column, that throughout this budgetary process this year, and also last year, when the chief first came before the Board of Finance requesting ultimately 16 new firefighters, during that entire time, the issue of the caliber, or dedication, or hard work and training of our career and volunteer firefighters has never been an issue for me. The issue has always been, in response to a request by the fire chief of a 50% increase in personnel, the issue has always been for me, do we need more firefighters? If so, how many? And how should they be deployed to best meet the needs, especially rising medical calls in our community at the lowest possible cost to the taxpayers? I think that was a reasonable endeavor for me to undertake in my position and my oath of office. I would do the same with any other department that would come forward in requesting such a large increase in personnel. And in fact, at the February meeting, the chairman of the Fire Commission thanked me for my endeavors and thought that I helped a great deal in educating people about the day-to-day operations of our fire department, people who might not have been aware of the fact of how our four shifts work and how firefighters are assigned to specific apparatus, and how that affects budgeting and staffing. So, and yes, you're right, I did quote a couple of people that I went to outside the department. I also met extensively with the fire chief here in North Haven and the fire commissioner last year, and I did quote Chief Hershop of Guilford and Chief Myers of Richfield in their opinions about the NPFA standards, so I'll give you those names, and that's who I quoted. But I think that throughout this process of analyzing the requests that the fire chief made, I thought it was certainly within my purview to question, which is, and certainly the First Selectman might have felt similar feelings in that he appointed a study group last April, consisting of the finance director, the fire chief, and two members of the Board of Finance to look into it. So I wasn't the only one studying the fire department. The First Selectman, and I appropriately commended him for that effort to study the fire department, to see what we could learn about the department, to make appropriate staffing decisions. And again, three members of the Board of Finance came to the same conclusion that I did, that after reviewing thousands of medical calls, thousands of emergency calls, 65% of which are medical, that the best way to go would be to activate a second ambulance. I'm not the only one who came to that conclusion. Three other members of the Board of Finance felt the same way, two Republicans and one Democrat. This is not a political issue for me. I've lived in this town all my life, and I'm trying to address the needs of our town. Mr. Frida and I have often said here at this board that the number-one complaint that we get from citizens, and I'm sure Mr. Frida gets far more than I, is taxes, taxes, taxes. So I think that it's an important part of my job and my oath of office to look at how to best provide services at the lowest possible cost, and that's what I tried to do. Now, as far as the issue of the walkout on April 2, that was a relatively new issue. Again, I've been talking about the fire department for a year and a half, since the chief first requested 16 new firefighters back in the winter of 2018 at his workshop. The walkout was a relatively recent issue. I did make a two-minute statement at the Board of Selectmen, as you said, April 4. I thought it was a disrespectful show, and that is, I'm entitled to that opinion. I announced at the Board of Selectmen meeting that I would be going to the Fire Commission meeting to ask the chairman, and I did that, and he gave his opinion, and I accepted his opinion. I didn't fight with him on it. I accepted. His opinion was that they were tired, and I said, okay, that's your opinion? That's your opinion? I disagree with it. But, you know, I don't know what else to say about it. I did mention it at those two occasions, and we're bringing it up again, because you've come to the microphone, and again eloquently spoke and gave your opinions. But I believe that I have fulfilled my oath of office by taking literally hundreds of hours of my time studying fire department day-to-day operations, other towns of similar size, and grand list makeup, which ours is about 70% residential, 30% commercial, you know, trying as best as I can to compare us to other like municipalities. No, not, there are no two municipalities exactly the same. You're not going to get another municipality in Connecticut exactly like North Haven with two highways and whatnot. I understand that, but you could get pretty close if you make a long list of criteria, and that's what I did, and I thought that was a responsible way to go. I did consult with many fire department career and volunteers. Fire department career and volunteers reached out to me on the condition of confidentiality, which I will not, I will not violate their confidentiality. But I have been contacted and talked to, and you can believe me or not believe me, that's up to you, but I will not violate the confidentiality. If people like Officer Smith give permission for me to use their name, I will do so. But if people come to me and demand confidentiality, I'm going to honor that as well, because I want to promote people coming forward to me, as I'm sure Mr. Frida would like people to come forward to him with ideas, suggestions, and complaints. So, you know, I think that we all have the same goal, which is how to best provide emergency medical services and fire suppression to our town. I think that we've taken steps as far as apparatus goes. So, you know, the third one that's often referred to as over 25 years old is Engine 5, which I believe has been retired and will be used for training purposes only once the training facility is built. And again, as I said earlier tonight, I'm not opposed to the training facility. I want to make sure that we fund it properly in accordance with the rules of our charter and our budgeting process. And I hope you understand that, that I was not bringing that issue up, saying I don't want the training facility. I want to make sure that we are budgeting for it properly, and I accepted Mr. Frida's response about the Quinnipiac funding. So, you know, I don't, I hope no one's saying, oh, no, now she's against the training center. I'm not against the training center, but I want to make sure that we're funding it appropriately in accordance with our normal budgetary process. And again, I believe that's my obligation under my oath of office. And again, I will continue to pursue my oath of office to the best of my ability and make opinions, and come to opinions and conclusions and suggestions that I see fit, that will best serve the needs of the town at the lowest possible cost to the taxpayers. That is my fundamental initiative all the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I do absolutely hear what you're saying, and I do like to hear what you're saying. I do like to hear some of the things you said. I think my passion in this speech came from the deliverance of what you did, the way that you did it. I think that the way that you spoke to the Board of Fire Commissioners, I found, like I said, a little unnerving. I felt as if you put them on trial in the way that you spoke to them, and berated is the wrong word, but you just kept pressing them for a response that you were hoping was more along your line of thinking. And as you said, and I thank you for the compliment that I eloquently spoke at that meeting, but I still am trying to get across, and I, and that we honestly did leave because we were tired, and that's what I tried to voice that evening. The only thing that, in this conversation, and if you'd like to go out for coffee one time, I would love to do, and we can talk some more.
I think we've talked on the phone before.
We have.
I think you contacted me a couple of years ago.
I did, I did.
Assistance, if I recall.
And unfortunately, you were able, you were unable to provide that to me. You said you couldn't. But in any case, what I also would just like to say is, the one thing that did jar me a little bit was the misrepresentation of your comment. When I spoke to you and said to let it go, I was specifically discussing that situation. I felt that there was...
The walkout?
Correct.
Well, that was a new...
That there was continued static and drama surrounding it, and can we just please let it go? And that's the only thing that came to my mind at the moment was the song. I felt that I was misrepresented in this column by when you said that I was, the firefighters were tired of hearing from me. I never at one point said that, and I think that's what kind of spurred me to say, you know what? This needs to be addressed.
Okay. Well, you might recall that at the April 23 meeting, the vice chairman of the Fire Commission said to me, without me asking him any questions, said he walked out when I came to the microphone, because he didn't want to hear what I had to say. And I find that a shocking statement from a sitting commissioner at a public meeting for the budget, a commissioner of the Fire Commission, not to specifically state, and he did, it's on video, that he walked out because he didn't want to hear what I had to say. A member of the public, yes, I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen, but I'm also, I spoke as a member of the public, to not, for a sitting commissioner at a budget public hearing not to want to hear what people have to say, I found that shocking, and I would wonder, you know, if you found that shocking also.
Well, I'm not going to comment on that. If you want to know why he did what he did and felt what he did...
I'll have to talk to him.
You'll talk to him.
I will, and I did.
Just as we, just as we would have respected you coming to find one of us, if we reach, or there are, you have said, firefighters that reach out to you and want to discuss things with you, the phone is two ways, and you could have always reached out to one of us privately or publicly and asked us why we did what we did. Instead, you took it to different mediums and never, to my knowledge, asked any of us why we did, so it needed to be addressed. But we still, at this point, I'm still misrepresented in this article, because you said, saying the firefighter, that somebody addressed you, okay? A volunteer firefighter came to the public comment microphone to specifically address me, saying the firefighters are tired of hearing from me, and that I should just let it go. I was that firefighter that addressed you. I did not say that we were tired of hearing from you. I did say let it go, and I think that's where I'm being misrepresented, represented, and I, you know, I kind of think I owe an apology for that.
Well, from the rest of the comments that you were giving about me, that was my inference.
Well...
Okay.
But that's not what I said.
But you definitely came to the microphone to speak to me.
I did.
You actually turned your back on the commission, and that's fine.
Absolutely. And I, and I will not, you know, obviously, you're not going to make any changes to the misrepresentation, and I will not take up any more time of this Board of Selectmen, but I want to thank you for your help, for your time.
All right, thank you, and I will continue to do my job. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Kurt, okay, Mr. Andrews.
Good evening. I'm Kurt Andrews. I'm lieutenant of the fire police and been a member of the fire department for a long time. As one of the leaders of the volunteer fire department, I just want to clear the record once and for all. When we went into the board, to the budget meeting ahead of time, all of the officers said that we would stay there and through the whole first round of people speaking, and that was all. That's all it was. There was no disrespect that was meant. It was predetermined that we were going to be there for the whole first round of people speaking in favor or against budget. That's it. Sorry if you took offense to it, but that's all it was, and we decided that at 6:45 that night, Sally.
Well, I know you stayed, because you, you were seated, and you stayed for the whole meeting.
I did, there was no disrespect.
The other volunteers, the other volunteers all stood for those two hours. I wonder why, why did they stand? Maybe that added to them being tired.
I don't know.
They all stood shoulder to shoulder along that back wall.
They did.
Maybe if they sat, they wouldn't have been as tired.
But I just wanted to clear the record.
But you stayed, you stayed, and Officer Obier, I believe, also stayed, because I chatted with him quite, quite well after the conclusion.
And Mr. Bumpstead as well.
Okay, I didn't notice him, but I noticed you and Officer Obier.
But that's, but that's, from the horse's mouth, that's exactly what happened, okay?
You and I have had positive discussions. Will you acknowledge that, Mr. Andrews?
Absolutely, Ms. Boemi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you for the comments, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you for, you know, for volunteering so long, you know, both, both of you, you know, on behalf of the town, of, you know, everybody that lives in the town, you know, in terms of what you've done, and, you know, to make us all, you know, hopefully sleep better and be safe. And thank you, Sally, too, for, you know, I mean, you know, in terms of even us, Sally and I both being elected officials, what we've done is, and Sally, to a very great extent, based on how much time she spends, is also, you know, a volunteer in terms of how much she devotes to be, you know, first on the Board of Finance and now as a select person. So I think, you know, you're, and then on a positive note, you know, I think we all appreciate, you know, in spite of maybe some of the things that have transpired, the fact that you, what you've done and what she's done has really been on, you know, beside other things aside, has been, you know, what you all believe is in the best interest of the town. So thank you. Thank you all.
All right, before we adjourn, the Memorial Day Parade.
Yes.
So, May 25, at, I think it's 10:15, we gather at the site, and, yes, so we, so we encourage everyone to come. The veterans have done a great job working with Valerie and Tammy in my office and putting the parade together. Post 76 does an outstanding job, and Bill, myself, and Sally will be there.
Yeah, I really hope a lot of people show up. I've been a little discouraged in recent years. The attendance seems to be dwindling. Haven't you noticed that a bit? And I would, you know, I would hope that more people would, would attend. You know, I've been attending since, I don't know, about 1960, and it seemed like the whole town was there back then. So one thing that my father, who was a World War II veteran, always impressed upon me as unique about Memorial Day versus Veterans Day, whereas Veterans Day honors all of the millions of folks, men and women, who've served in our military... the millions of folks, men and women who've served in our military, are all honored on Veterans Day. Memorial Day is kind of a somber remembrance of the approximate 1.2 million who died on the field of battle, half of which were in the Civil War. So it's, you know, my father used to say, you know, the picnics and the hot dogs and the horseshoes is all great, but don't forget what this day is really about. So I really hope that a lot of people will come out on Memorial Day, and, you know, we have a beautiful, very eloquent and somber service after, which is really a touching service. And unfortunately, the only people that seem to be there are the parents of the high school kids in the band waiting to take them home. So really, if you could come to the parade and participate and honor those who fell on the battlefield, I think we'd be serving our town well.
Before we close, I just want to say, tied in the Memorial Day Parade, that about three years ago, a young high school student came to me and said, "Mr. Frida, would you consider an idea that I have?" I said, "Certainly, what is it?" And he said, "Could you put flags up in the center block district going around the bend?" And I said, "I think that's an outstanding job, an outstanding idea," and we did it. So most recently, at Earth Day, another North Haven resident came up to me and said, "Mr. Frida, would you consider extending the flags even longer?" And we're going to be doing that this year. So we'll be getting fresh flags. They'll be going up before Memorial Day, and they will, they will stay up until Thanksgiving this year. And we'll do that every year. It first started Memorial Day to July 4th, then I extended it through Labor Day, but based on the suggestion of one of our North Haven residents who happens to be a teacher in another district, I'm going to be doing that through Thanksgiving. And every year, we'll replace the flags with fresh flags from Memorial Day through Thanksgiving.
Great. So come to the parade, please.
Just to note, too, from what, you know, what we've, what we've learned, this is the 73rd year for the parade, so it's pretty noteworthy. And this is also, I think, as Sally and Mike both know, this also celebrates the 100th anniversary of the American Legion, which was formed after, in 1919, after World War I. So I think it's a pretty noteworthy, you know, event that we've done this in the town of North Haven for 73 years. So, you know, come out to the parade for the 73rd time and also to celebrate the fact that the American Legion has been instrumental in terms of the parade, and they're celebrating its 100th anniversary.
All right, motion, is there a second bill to adjourn?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We'll see you next month.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.